Calling this thing to order. I'll dispense with the pledge of allegiance for tonight. Let's dive into the financial report. Rich, whenever you're ready.
Yep. Okay. There's really nothing significant to report this month. It's been a pretty boring month. However, we're about halfway. Well, we are halfway through the fiscal year. Received about 52% of our operating revenue and we spent about 43% of our budgeted operating expenditures. So we're in good shape.
Rich, any questions?
That's it.
I have a major question. How same time is here?
Well, you can. I'm in the living room of the condo right now. And the weather was 80 degrees today and sunny, so.
Good to hear. Okay. Right here. Over here.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Any questions, Rich? Wonderful. So Todd, the manager's report, please.
Well, I'll run through this relatively in short order since we don't have an audience right now. But just highlight initiatives that staff has undertaken over the last month. We've been involved, as you all know, in the course of Chevy Chase development, kind of Bethesda Market Park development project. We organized the January 13 walking for of properties adjacent to the Purple Line and a January 18 meeting among town officials, Purple Line representatives and town residents. We attended a meeting, staff meeting with local county and state officials as well as town officials to discuss municipal regulatory authority issues, continued engagement on the matter of applicability of county legislation in town. And we scheduled a work session prior to the February 8 meeting, but I'll get to that in a second because that might change to February 7th if you're all available. We've communicated with Montgomery County Police Department about speed cameras on East West Highway and Bradley Lane. That latter item will be discussed under discussions. Communicated with S H A regarding maintenance of state roads around the town. Continued to manage town park and waterway improvement projects, including Zimmerman and Coquelin Run. We do have progress to report. Dave, you want to give them an update that we're almost there?
Yeah. So we've gotten the approval from the Corps of Engineers for the Coquelin Run project. That is, that stream is construction restricted between March 1st and June 15th. So you can't do any work on it between those times of year, which means that at this point we would be able to start it now and finish it before March 1st. So we're looking at a summer project, not a spring project. We have gotten back the approved W S S C easements which have been recorded for this removal park project. We've gotten our forest conservation plan approval from the park and planning for that project. We expect to get some highway administration approval in very short order. And so, once we get all of those things, we can get our Senate Control Permit from County and hopefully get all their approval squared away for that project. So we're probably looking to have the same contractor ideally, maybe both of those projects simultaneously. Is we update. So progress, but not shovels there.
I, what are you guys doing at Leland and Elm? I noticed there are a bunch of markings on the road up there.
Leland and East.
East, I'm sorry. Leland and East.
Yeah, East.
And the intersection improvement project or realignment to add a sidewalk along the north side of Leland and sort of tighten that intersection up for pedestrian and vehicular safety. So it's a P S C initiative that actually goes back to 2019 and a little bit further. It's sort of been revisited and so we reached out to the immediate property owners to get feedback. They're invited to the meeting next Tuesday to discuss their thoughts about the project.
So there's going to be a sidewalk on the side where there isn't currently a sidewalk?
It's under consideration, under the traffic signage sidewalk policy. I guess the P S C will give feedbacks. There'll probably be several, several meetings and then they'll make a recommendation to the council whether to proceed or not proceed, but that would be something.
There is not a sidewalk on Leland now on any of the, on the, was that the west side? No, the east side. There's only, there's only a sidewalk on the, on the one side. So it, I don't want to second guess the P S C, but is there, are they contemplating a sidewalk along that entire section or just a portion of it?
No. What is being considered is basically where the sidewalk ends on that side of the street at 44th Street. Like bring the sidewalk down and then have your crosswalk connection across Leland to the south side at that intersection.
So there's only, there's only, what is that? Two properties there that are really affected?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. But you would cross from that sidewalk over to the other sidewalk going down, down east. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Just curious.
Sure.
And your question, Rich, is about the east and Leland is something else I was to report that we've been coordinating with the Public Services Committee, Dave has, on several contemplated public works projects. And we've been attending the P S C meetings to discuss the improvements and we'll be holding additional meetings on those with residents in the P S C.
Right.
We've continued to work on stormwater management improvements on Leland and Woodbine Streets. And as reported previously, we developed an M O U for county review for cost sharing for those improvements. We haven't heard anything back. Dave's pinged them to see if they've reviewed it yet, but we haven't heard anything to date. We also planned for asphalt and concrete repairs for this spring. Continued to oversee W S S C water main replacements on Thorn Apple and Leland and provided projects to support to town committees. Going back to the issue of the Fairbury Council meeting, I had initially sent out an email on some possible dates for a rescheduled meeting since January, sorry, since February 14th is Valentine's Day and Ash Wednesday. I believe the idea of scheduling on February 8th was to avoid conflict with Community Relations Committee meeting, but I understand Stephanie's not available on February 8th. And so, we don't believe it's too difficult to move the Community Relations Committee meeting and we could hold the meeting on the 7th if that works for everyone.
They could, they could move over to the walking center in the conference room and then we.
Steph got to remind you at 8:00.
Exactly. Exactly. I'll be fine. So it's with February 7th.
I think they can function without me.
And we would have a work session just prior to that as well, so.
Thank you for.
No worries. No, thanks.
Well, that's, that's worth it. Thanks.
Thanks, Todd. Any questions? Great. So it's now time for public comments. I do see a member of the public online and I wasn't sure. Warren Nolan, if you would like to make a public, just a general comment or if you were planning on testifying during the public hearings, but you have the floor. Warren, can you hear me? Or someone that has Warren Nolan?
Yes.
I guess not. Okay. No public comments. Great. So the next items for discussion are the public hearings themselves. So we have two, two themes, but three changes, our perspective changes. So the first is an ordinance to amend Chapter 16, which is the noise control chapter of the town code to enact a full year ban on gas powered leaf blowers. Is there anyone that would like to testify? Mr. Nolan, is there something, would you like to testify for that? Okay.
That's the public hearing.
That's the public hearing for that. I guess we can, as a, as a town council, have any discussions about that particular change or ordinance? Is there any discussion that my colleagues have for this?
No comment? No.
Yeah, I would like to say thank you, thank you, Mayor Lane. I would like to say that I'm really gratified that we have arrived at this point after many months of deliberation, which is proper and appropriate, on change of our ordinance to enact a full year ban on gas powered leaf blowers effective January 1, or effective this year, 2024, which is one year in advance of when the county's full ban on gas powered leaf blowers will go into effect. We've had a partial year ban now for several years and have enjoyed the benefits of quieter landscaping and cleaner air. And, you know, I think we look forward to enjoying that benefit throughout the rest of this year and of course into 2025 when the county's ban goes into effect.
Joy? I see Mr. Nolan. I don't know. Just want to make sure everyone's given the chance if they want to. Do my colleagues have any other comments or would like to entertain a motion?
Troy, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I'd be happy to make a motion. So I move that the council vote on this ordinance to amend Chapter 16 noise control of the town code to enact a full year ban on gas powered leaf blowers.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Yay.
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 My thanks to the Climate and Environment Committee for providing, answering all our questions and providing so much research and thoughtful comments over, over all of these months as we've been deliberating this. And I'm very happy that we were able to do this. So thank you. Of course.
In the spirit of Doku, deed goes unpunished. Next up is the communication plan.
Yes.
And I don't know if we discussed that. I'm sure Troy, the committee will be discussing it, but it's really vital that this get out very quickly so that the landscapers are aware of it and are already thinking about it. Of course, the county ban gets to sale on the equipment starts as of July 1st.
This year.
This year anyway. But in any event, we obviously would not want anybody to be surprised. So I encourage the committee to.
Right.
Help us and obviously we on the council will support that.
Absolutely. Well, spring might come early, so we have to be mindful that everything should be in place as soon as possible. So, good. The next public hearings is around our elections. So there's two parts, just because there's a code revision and a charter revision. Both allow, one is the ordinance to amend Chapter 8 of the town code for elections and the other is to amend Article 4, which includes, which includes specific information on registration, nomination and elections of the town charter. So I'm going to treat them together, if you will. And if Ms. Elkins or Mr. Nolan have any comments about these particular changes, please, you have the floor.
No comments, but the election board endorses them. So do the corgis.
I'm sorry. Did you hear?
Now, I think you cut in and out.
Karen, could you please repeat that?
Can you try again?
Cut out a while more. Well, if you, there you go, Karen. Go ahead. We, it cut out a little bit, so if you do want to repeat, oh, you went to me again. No worries. Any, any other comments, public comments before, okay, we're closing, public comments? Are there any discussion items around this that my colleagues would like to? Therefore, we can, now the intent behind this is to effectively make elections a little bit more clear and also a little bit more flexible for future town councils to determine what type of in-person versus hybrid or mail-in. So it allows for, because the changes need to be reported back to the county, it allows for a little bit more flexibility and clarity. So those are the, we're not changing anything fundamental, if you will. Nonetheless, I am happy to entertain a motion to accept both of these changes. I will go ahead and make, I put forth a motion to amend Chapter 8 of the town code and amend Article 4 of the town charter to reflect changes with respect to registration, nomination and elections for town council.
Second.
Second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous.
A vote of thanks for the election board for their work and all this.
Absolutely.
Raising to our attention a lot of the inconsistencies and things that had to be clarified. Karen, thank you very much and Kurt and Chris on the work.
Absolutely. Yes. Definitely created a manual there that allows for everyone to pick it up and know, and know what's going on. So, great. Moving on to council discussions, the Bradley Lane improvements, as Todd had discussed during his manager's report, the P S C had a meeting on December 19th and a number of residents that live on Bradley Lane attended that meeting. Some of them are new families to that street and with younger children. So there was some specific concern relating to just the traffic volume and the speeds depending on the time of day. And a family in particular has taken it kind of upon them to communicate with their neighbors about the, you know, A, what the process might be to work with the state highway administration with the town to potentially either lower the speed limit on Bradley Lane, do a little bit more enforcement as it relates to, to the types of vehicles that utilize that road and have a permanent, hopefully, permanent speed camera installed. Obviously, there's a lot of communication that needs to occur with the state highway administration, but what the Bradley Lane residents asked us for was for the town council to effectively write a letter asking S H A to, you know, let us know what the study results look like and do what it takes to, to implement a more permanent speed camera solution on that road. So we made them aware that the, there are ongoing discussions or are discussions in place for expanding the western part of Bradley Lane or at least creating a dedicated left-hand turn lane and enforcement in general and kind of how that occurs. But I wanted to make sure I let you all know in case you have any concerns with putting together a letter, putting that in place. Is there anything else you would like to add around that? We've already sent in the letter with respect to the widening. This would just be a kind of abandoned, if you will. So. Anything you'd like to add to it or?
I think the idea of trying to better monitor the speed in the force compliance sense. I'm not sure we have the practical matter to prevent certain vehicles from going on the road. That's.
Trucks, trucks are the trap, probably, but it's not enforced.
So there is a truck problem issue?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay. I had not realized that.
Yeah. So we also, because there's, there have been certain complaints with respect to the vegetative encroachment on the sidewalk, which also sidewalk to begin with, obviously busy road. And the residents did hear us in saying, hey, since we're having these conversations, let's talk with your neighbors about, you know, putting, putting that vegetative cover a little closer to their properties and less on the, on the sidewalk. So it's a little bit of a, a good exchange, if you will, of ideas. And so, yeah. Any thoughts, any other thoughts? Great. Joy? Okay. Well, thanks for that. I just wanted to make sure everything was all good there. Dealing with the state highway administration is always a speedy thing.
Where do we stand in terms of the crosswalk and foot of making?
At east, east side way.
Do we have any further news about the plans that we're supposed to see at Thanksgiving time?
We were told by the gentleman at S H A that, and then subsequently by, by Delegate Solomon's office, that they had discussed with S H A during their normal meeting, a regular meeting, and that they were on track to do it by spring.
Even though we haven't seen the plans?
Even though we haven't seen the plans. We had, I don't believe they were done, the plans initially reached out to them. They said they were finalizing and they were almost complete. I can reach out and ask them to share them with us if they are in fact complete. I can also copy Delegate Solomon's office to make sure that they follow up with that on their, in their normal monthly meeting with S H A.
That'd be fine. I think, I'm not, I don't know what comments I would make on the plans, but assuming they put in the life that they promised, it was more that that was a milestone to give us some comfort that they're actually going to be able to build it. So it was more checking the box that the plans are done so they can then proceed to the construction phase.
Absolutely. There was some assurance given, given to us by Delegate Solomon's office said that in fact it is the signal, the, the signal that we wanted and it, it hasn't been modified in any way about, from what we asked for. So, but nonetheless, I'll follow up and, and copy Delegate Solomon's office to make sure that they can follow up as well.
Great. Thank you.
So we are in the next section, Corso.
Go ahead.
Go, I, I can try. So the public hearing for Corso is going to be in front, I'm sorry, the county planning board is going to be on February the 1st. We've not been given any reason that there's going to be a delay or anything like that. So it is happening on February the 1st. There are areas, if you will, for which more detailed information will be gathered or produced after site plan approval and that relates to stormwater management and site access. So the intent here, since everything else has been in line in accordance to how, you know, we've been asking for certain accommodations along the way, those, those have been flagged that those are the two areas for any sort of testimonial in front of the planning board. Of course, we would say that, you know, we're, we're very happy in having this partnership and overall very pleased with the, the project, but these are the two areas to which we are realizing that the county planning board would not have full, like direct authority to, but we want to make sure we're on the record by saying that further, further work is needed with respect to stormwater management and site access. Are there any other comments that you feel that should be included in this testimony? And of course, it will be, you know, you all have a chance to review everything.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, for taking on the testimony and presenting it to planning board. It's a big deal, I mean, actually. You know, this is a big project in support for the town and I think it's, it's a real opportunity for, for the town to say to its new planning board, you know, how strongly we've worked with the developers and the county officials to make this a successful project and we've been behind it. Because I think, you know, we're just so always tagged with being hopeless and it'd be a situation where we worked out something where we've been forthcoming and really worked to, and supported for us to make that clear. I think in terms of the two major issues, I would, my suggestion about tone is that in regard to stormwater management, all we're looking for, first of all, I would suggest we compliment the county on their due diligence, but they've looked very good at digging down deep and first saying, no, this isn't compliant and so forth. I think thanking the permitting staff for what they've done is a helpful, good thing to do. And, and to convey that we, we simply want the assurance that, you know, there will not be additional water flowing down the middle lane if it comes out of it. And, and we expect that that would be complied with. I don't think there's a lot more than that, but I would, I can understand. But in regard to the traffic issue, I think there, I don't think we have the clarity and the visibility to a successful outcome at the same degree of confidence that we can have regarding stormwater management issues. And so I think on that, you know, I would recommend that we hit that harder and say we, we have the understanding or indication, and Todd, if you can find the right words here, that it's heading in the right direction, that we expect to be able to happen to turn left, but we are still looking for more committed assurance or some word to that effect. There's still some uncertainty on that issue. And I think our, making very clear that we see that uncertainty and we want it tightened up is something that we ought to convey and not, not otherwise just signal that everything's fine.
I noticed that they're doing traffic counts on Connecticut as we're heading towards.
Okay. Yeah. There goes the mine.
Thank you. And any other thoughts, comments and?
No, no. Good, good work.
Of course, this will be drawn up likely by Friday, Monday, the latest, and sent out to you all for review well before February 1st. The next is Bethesda Market Park.
Some progress. Todd and Irene and I participated in another group partners call this morning. One of the key agreements, as you may recall, is the draft general development agreement that was pre-executed between the developers and county. And the developers had submitted their markup of the county's draft back in November and nothing had been heard since. But what we were told today is that the county has collected most of its comments, they're going to be meeting internally this week and they will be ready to meet with the developers in the back end of next week to convey their thoughts about the red lines that the developers had presented back in November. So hopefully that is another turn of the document and we'll be that much closer to having that agreement. Separately, we, the town, had submitted a non-disclosure agreement, which was something which the Department of Transportation had requested. We'd all discussed previously the importance of being able to share all the drafts with the byline agreements with all the parties. So we got all see what all the parties were committing to. And DOT, Chris Conklin said he was prepared to do that, but didn't want confidentiality of the drafts. So we took it on ourselves to draft a very narrowly defined N D A, which we hope will be acceptable. And we've got good help from Rod and also Francois's Carrier. Net of it is that developer has accepted it and the Parks Department has reviewed it, marked it up and sent back the markups and they seem basically fine. We've sent, asked Francois's and Rod to look at it, but they seem all right. We have not yet heard back from the county, but at least we've made some headway getting that agreement done. And once the draft N D, pardon, the draft G D A, General Development Agreement is with us, then we will be able to turn to the draft with our agreement with the developer in respect to our contributions to the garage. So I would hope that we could turn to that agreement as early as February and it shouldn't be complicated to do, but that would be, that would be progress. The other bit of progress is apparently they're now really into the weeds of the appendices in working out the interim agreement between the Parks Department and the developer, which is the agreement that both parties want in place so that the developer can re-engage the landscape consultants, architects, and the Parks Department will be in a position to pay them without causing further third-party costs that otherwise have to be carried by the developer. And that agreement, as I said, they basically worked it out, they're looking at an appendix and, but Irene and Todd are of different view. I had the sense that it could be signed within another week or something. We really seem to be very close to that. And on the basis of the optimism of that, E Y A has already been in touch with the landscape architects and prepared to call them back and do work. And the idea is that there would be a new, an act round of meetings with the community this spring, picking up where everything was left off the last time we looked at all this. They in fact are going to have, the Parks Department and E Y A are going to have a meeting, I think it's next week, to basically be there for, you know, for the kickoff of the further design work and discuss where everything is. The point that I brought up in the call this morning was that we, the town, want to be involved in that process. We do not want a situation where, you know, a situation where, you know, we're paying for half the park, but we don't see anything until, until there's a public meeting. And I was very pleased that Midi Figurado, the new head of the Parks Department, agreed with that completely. So we will be brought into the process. And so we're not looking for, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not going to be looking at the details of all this. And, and we want to make sure at a high level that we're understanding the amenities, the costs associated with that, the potential cost overruns, and making sure the features that we care about are earned in these plans so that we will be able to have our seat at that table before these plans go to the public. And they've agreed to that. So I don't know what the timing will be of those meetings or how we'll set up organizing, but they've agreed in principle. So generally, I think that was, that was, you know, good spirit, good progress. And the, oh, I'm sorry, the one other agreement I should touch on is, but the Parks Department wants to do is push down the road a final agreement that actually stipulates how they will contribute to the funding of the parks themselves. The interim agreement just focuses on the design portion. And I believe it's the case that the Parks Department would like to defer that agreement till quite, maybe, you know, like a year from now, when they really know finally, after all the design work, what the cost would be. And as I think I had mentioned before to the council, that could cause some tension because we don't want a situation where we're executing, committing ourselves to funding a garage without knowing more about the commitment from the Parks Department to refunding the parks. So we're going to have to have some discussions about that. But in any event, they're aware of that agreement. And then, of course, paired with an agreement of the Parks Department for the developers, for the parks, would be an agreement for the town for our contributions to the parks, which of course is a large amount of our money, much more associated with the garage. So anyway, issues still to be taken care of, but today was a good discussion. And then separately, there is a party that's interested in potentially making a private donation to the park for name rights. And I'll be involved in those discussions in the meeting tomorrow.
And the claim did say this week, a year off the park?
A year off the park. Oh, and the other thing was actually, I think I've said this in the past, but it's just not clear to us that the Parks Department really, really cares about these parks. And we're just really pleased to see that not only was generated by Mike Riley before he retired, but that's been recommitted to by, by Midi Figurado now that she's in that role. And very committed to making sure that there's parks on both parking lots, which is good for us here.
Any questions? Thank you. Great. Municipal regulatory authority. So when Joy and I attended a mayor municipal league conference, a fall conference, a couple months ago, the topic of, of housing came up as very important throughout the county. And obviously, the different municipalities are approaching the topic of housing in different ways. But it opened up an opportunity for, for me to be able to speak with other municipalities about, you know, with respect to the fact that many of us derive our regulatory authority through the state. And obviously, municipalities are different in terms of some having some authority, some having mandatory referrals. And then, like us, we, we do have the ability to regulate certain aspects of, of buildings and such. That when the last time that the code was updated in 2006 to reflect the so-called magnetization that was occurring on not only lots in the town, but, but in other municipalities as well, there was an effort to say that, you know, the, the opportunity for municipalities to further regulate so that there's, that the setbacks and heights and, you know, all of that. At the time, the, the concept of municipal housing didn't occur. I'm not even sure if it was still in academic circles, but the, the phrase was not coined until 2010, which was after the last time that this code has been updated. So what, what we did was we reached out to the municipalities in Montgomery County and invited our state delegation along with, at that point was, or now is Council President Fritzen and Vice, Vice President Stewart, who herself was a mayor of Tacoma Park before becoming a council member. So she was well aware about the types of, you know, the relationship, if you will, with respect to regulation. And just had an open and frank discussion with respect to what can be done at the state level, specifically if, if a technical amendment can be introduced so that the, it's very clear that municipalities have authority over all types of residential housing. So it's not just single-family homes, but if it's a, a town, a townhouse, a duplex, a triplex, you know, municipal housing kind of thing. Once it enters into the realm of commercial and all that, that's a separate situation. But just asking for that type of clarity, not asking for zoning or anything like that. The discussion occurred December 10th, maybe? I don't remember. I'm so sorry. I think it was December 10th or somewhere along that line. And a very, very good discussion with the council leadership saying that their intent right now with respect to these types of discussions around zoning is to first better understand what current capacity exists in the county. And they're still waiting on addition, oh, I'm sorry, also the director of the planning department, Jason Sartori, attended this particular meeting too, with, with respect to what sort of additional recommendations might, might come down the pike. Are they looking for master plan amendments or Z T As? Or, you know, these, these types of conversations are still occurring. And the, but it isn't necessarily, while they wouldn't commit to a timeline to say, oh, don't worry, it'll be 2024, we're not sure. The state delegation, because we were asking for a technical amendment in December, it was considered to be a late filing, almost an emergency filing, which is why the state delegation was kind of pressing the county council executive leadership to say, is this an emergency now? Is this something that can wait until the 2025 legislative session? Or is there legislation coming down, a Z T A coming down the pike that we would need to be worried about this for 2024? So I can't say that there was 100%, you know, oh, don't worry about it kind of a thing. It was more, right now, the way the process is looking, there's a lot of studies that need to take place before then. So I, I offer this up to say that it is out there. We are going to continue to work with our state delegates after this session, because now that it's begun in earnest, to set this up so that by the summer of, of this, this summer 2024, we've got our cosponsors, we've got everything all set up so that it isn't, it should be a much smoother hearing process come 2025. We got 14 municipalities in Montgomery County to sign on to this, including some that already have zoning authority, such as Gaithersburg and Rockville, to say, we support our fellow municipalities in this regard. We understand where they're coming from and it would be, you know, it's good to have that. One other thing we made clear is that this is not a situation where we're looking for like a NIMBYism type of, of thing. What we're looking for is this clarification so it is more feasible for us to be able to speak with our residents and our constituents on when a Z T A comes about, that we're able to say, yes, but we, you know, have this clarification that we can still regulate buildings as, as it would be for single families. So in fact, from a county council point of view, we can be, we as municipalities can be a partner in this discussion rather than, you know, trying to field all sorts of concerns and all of that. So anything around, anything else I missed around?
That's a very, good summary. And I want to say, first of all, you did a great job in getting all those other municipalities engaged. And that, that is a lot of work. And, and instead of it just being the town, to have it be all that, really to, well, that great, that was a great job.
Thank you.
I would just add, the one thing that came out, which I thought was helpful to us, was a suggestion from President Fritzen, which is funny, Council President Fritzen, that he, he presented that one of the potential concerns that people might have about our proposal is that they might construe it to mean that we would actually, in a sense, bend, bend forward in a way to, to actually have even more restrictive setbacks and limitations on massing for multifamily housing, simply as a device or a means to curtail it, you know, indirectly. And he said it would be helpful if, in seeking a clarification, you made it clear that whatever would be the town's authority would be applied consistently across all types of housing. So that it would basically eliminate that potential concern that some might have, that we would actually, from their perspective, abuse the power to make it extra hard to build some multifamily housing. So I think that's something that behooves us to take on board when we do prepare. Something that frankly, I don't think any of us even thought of, was out there is a potential concern that could generate opposition to what we want. So we were basically saying, be proactive, take it off the table upfront and that'll make it easier for us.
Along those lines a little bit is that I do understand from Vice, Council Vice President Stewart, is that on Tuesday, there will be a Z T A introduced, co-sponsored by Fritzen and Stewart, for the ability for faith-based institutions to, to, because of, having just gone through this process as, as, if you will, as a stakeholder in the Corso local map amendment process, it's very laborious, it's expensive. And when it comes to organizations such, such as faith-based institutions, it's very difficult if they want, they're, they're land-rich, if you will, a lot of, a lot of these organizations. And also part of their mission is building affordable housing. So what they're looking for is the ability to make it a little bit easier from a county perspective to co-locate their, their organization, their, their church or whatever it might be, with housing built on top of it. So if we think about the Norwood Episcopal Church, right at our kind of border, if you will, on Bradley and Wisconsin at that corner, that's an example of, I don't know if that particular institution is, is interested in doing this, but according to Council, Vice Council President Fritzen, is that, Stewart, excuse me, is that there's 20 faith-based institutions in the county who are, right, they're drawing up plans. They're very interested to, to move forward, to impact the affordable housing situation that exists in, in the county. And, and another hundred beyond that that are at least trying to learn more. The purpose of the Z T A is to take away the, the, make, make the process a bit easier when it comes to conditional use of the land, rather than going through this whole M L process. There wasn't, the discussions with respect to M P D use, it wasn't clear to me anyway if that same thing would apply or they would expand that to make it a bit more helpful, you know, instead of the 12 and a half percent M P D use, maybe that, that takes up a little higher or whatever, maybe they have access to, to additional financing. That, that part wasn't clear to me as much, but nonetheless, that is their Z T A that's going to be introduced on, on Tuesday. And, and both of them are excited about that. So it seems to me that there's this idea of kind of hitting around the edges a little bit, making things a little bit easier for now. That seems to be how they're, they're tackling the housing situation. So I just wanted to mention that before moving on to M M L legislative updates. Unless anyone has any questions about them. So on December 20th, enjoy, let me know where I'm going astray here. On December 20th, I attended a, a meeting with the Mayor of the Municipal League Legislative Committee, discussed what their priorities are, just overall what's going on with respect to legislation that is at the state level that impacts municipalities. The first thing is that I think most of you have heard is that the budget cuts with respect to transportation projects at, at a state level are pretty deep, almost $3 billion of, of state cuts. And there, again, it's going around the edges. There's, there's like bus lines that are being, not so much cut, but, but less number of, of, of bus running that route.
Bus rapid transit?
Bus rapid transit, as well as some other regular. So for us as a municipality, the way that, you know, if you will, highway user revenue is how we get funded for our, you know, kind of transportation projects. But the M M L has worked toward, towards lessening the impact of that. What effectively it comes to for us is a point one, point one six percent loss of revenue from last year, this year to last year. Not that much of a difference. And for, obviously, for some municipalities, every penny matters, but it really won't make a material difference for, for the town. Counties are hit more, Baltimore City, but it's, this isn't a big deal.
Sorry, this is the percentage that we had of reference or what?
The highway route user revenue, there's some algorithm that affects, but the, for, for, in terms of the cuts, part of the $3 billion cuts, it, it, it results in a point one six percent loss. For us, it's very immaterial. So if people are coming up to you and saying, oh, what's going to happen, there's not, not so much impact. I'm going to speak about the housing bills in just a second, but the other part that's relevant to transportation is speed cameras. So once again, there's legislation in front of the state, the state to allow for non-police personnel to review speeding data and issue citations. So what it would be is like, you know, someone in the town staff would be certified and authorized to, to review where we to have speed cameras in the town, review that and issue a citation accordingly. And not sure if that's going to pass this time. This is the second invite at the apple. I don't know, Joy, if you, if you heard differently or, or more of an update around that, but they're doing all they can to, to, to get this through. So that's a little bit there. The other little, tiny little things that don't really apply as much to us. M M L is a lot about creating additional revenue opportunities for individual municipalities. So that includes the creation of tourism zones. Again, not relevant to the town, but there are some additional, you know, financial benefits when you're able to make it a little bit easier for businesses to operate, whether it's Airbnb or whatever the case might be, as well as total tourism attraction of some sort. And the local revenues that come from, if you're charging admission or amusement tax or something like that. So they're working on that as well as tightening up the cannabis legislation that was passed last term, clarifying what that zoning looks like. As you know, municipalities cannot say no to a distribution center location, and there's one just right outside the town's limits. But we can say no as it relates to a consumption location. So when we think about the fact that the Elm Street Park and the Farm Women, I was just about to say, is going to be right outside this distribution center, you know, we, we eventually will have these types of discussions.
But it wasn't Elm Street Park. We don't have a jurisdiction directive in it.
No, no jurisdiction, but just to.
But Elm Street Park, we do, right? Or is that, I know that's, it's our.
It's shared?
Well, it's, it's our land, but it's, it's county's, I mean, it's inside the municipality of Town of Chet and Chase. So our ordinance would apply. Is that right, Todd? If we had any issue about, even though it's county-owned land and, and it's a park maintained by the national commission.
It's within the town's corporate boundaries. I'm not, do you know, Irene, how that, how that is parsed out in a potential legislation?
No, all I know is that if, you know, there aren't any signs in the, that I've seen, and maybe there are in Elm Street Park that says no smoking. So I would think that that would be something that we may want to consider.
Well, yeah, I guess what we're getting at is the, sorry, but who has the senior voice in determining an ordinance for a park that's inside of our town boundaries? Is it the town? Or is it the Parks Department? Because we actually have two parks, right? Because we have, we have a Elm Street and we have, well, the Watson Center Park, so it's an interesting question. Maybe there's some, 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 some legislation language So interesting question, maybe there's some, some legislation language there that make it clear that the municipality has the right to determine whatever ordinance applies to places of consumption of cannabis, regardless of whether it's state-owned property. I guess technically, the parks are state-owned.
They are, they are.
We'd like to have, to put it bluntly, we'd like to have senior status over the state of Maryland in respect to ordinances affecting those two parks, as my request.
And also, how would that affect the parks that we do own, so Rosemary and Zimmerman? And that's a question I don't know, but it's worth investigating.
We have full control over those parks.
Okay, so in terms of what is, what's done, so we could say, you can't smoke cigarettes in those parks, you can't smoke anything else in those parks, okay?
Yes, we have full control over those parks. Uncertain about Elm Street or Little Park.
Yeah, so Joy, you and I can work on that too, since you're attending those meetings as well.
Sure, sure.
Often, is any meeting now that?
Now that we're in session, it's weekly, actually. There's a weekly legislative committee meeting, and they're tracking, you know, the various bills that are going through, that are going through session. And the, I think, you know, top on the list, of course, is the speed camera thing, that's very closely related to municipal revenue. Again, not an issue that affects us, but in many towns, the revenue issue is that they, you know, they have limited number of police officers, they would like to get police officers out of the traffic business, at least with respect to those cameras, and deploy them to other areas so that then they can basically make more revenue if they use a non-uniform officer to issue those speed camera citations.
The last item is something that came across the wire today, if you will. So there's three housing bills that Governor Moore has, is putting forward. The first one is called the, let me make sure I can get the right, the Housing Expansion and Affordability Act, which is the most relevant one to us. Another one has to deal with the financing that would be available for affordable housing. And the third, I don't remember the third, because this isn't coming up for me.
It's the first I'm really focused.
It's the first that really focused, yeah. My apologies that I should have just opened this up. So the first one relates to the ability for more housing units to, affordable housing units to be built more quickly. What is specifically stated, this is out of the memo from the governor's office versus a notice or just a blog post that was rolling around social media today. Effectively, the intent is there's three conditions, one of three conditions that can be, there we go, that's what I was looking for. If you, it streamlines the process and allows for properties to be developed with higher density and in a more expeditious manner if the property is within one mile of the rail station, and will contain 25% affordable housing units, or formerly a state-owned campus or complex that will contain at least 50% affordable housing units, or land owned by a 501(c)(3) organization and will contain 50% affordable housing units. Starts out with that, to allow for permitting and just the process to run a little bit faster. We're trying to get some clarification as to what the scope, timing, who's impacted by this, because the way that this is reading right now, it's unclear if municipalities that already have zoning authority, the Rockville, Gaithersburg, Ilk, that impacts them as well, because this is potentially impacting their own zoning rules, on top of what might happen to, what the intent is for municipalities like ours. Interestingly enough, the initial MML read on this is that they're not concerned about infringement of authority, but it needs to be tracked down a little bit more to understand the details, because it reads a little bit differently than that. So we're in the process of reaching out to, I'm reaching out to the mayor of Gaithersburg to gain a little bit more clarity on that, because he expressed some concern. And I'm sure this will be a topic as well in the legislative committee meetings that you all will be having, so. More will be revealed on this.
It's also, though, it's separate from the first part, where it's arguably, could be difficult, because you have to put up a quarter of the housing being affordable, if you're within a mile of a rail station, right?
Well, it further says.
Right, well, it's the further that I'm really focusing on. Further says, in general, that they would, would this be basically statewide across all our zone?
It would, it would be statewide, but the way I'm reading this is that the first, one of the first conditions needs to be fulfilled before you get to this.
Okay, that was unclear.
Yeah, and that's what, that's how I'm operating as well, under, and that needs clarification.
I thought that the second, was it, right, it was a completely separate matter, saying, regardless of the bonus we're going to give toward development for those first three, any one of those first three, when you get, we want in general to permit.
Missing middle.
Missing middle housing in single-family residential neighborhoods, and we're prepared to move on that statewide across, on that matter. And that can, that could be great, to clarify whether that's standalone, or whether that only applies inside of the envelope established by the first condition.
Exactly, because they do further state that they don't expect that much to be built, because there's not that, those conditions that are met, it's not that much, but every little bit helps. So they say that further in the memo as well. So it needs to be clarified, you're exactly right. Joy, sorry.
Sure, I just wanted to ask if you have a sense of how this, what is the overlay between the governor's proposal and what we were discussing last year with respect to Thrive and that zoning text amendment that had been produced, that had been introduced by Councilmember Jawando?
I don't have a sense, you know, it's possible everyone's talking to each other. I think that Thrive made some waves all over the state, so, you know, I'm sure that they're all talking to each other. There might be some overlap considerations, but I'm not privy to who exactly, you know, was involved with this. But you might be able to find out more.
But I guess, I guess certainly, if this is contrary to the legislation, if basically this is to prevent, pre- preempt, not just any authority we may have, but county authority for zoning. So I would imagine that, perhaps a paradox, but even if, even if in fact, this county council in principle would support, you know, very substantial change in single-family residential zoning, permitting missing middle housing, they may be very upset about it being done by the state, rather than through their, you know, their own processes that they want to take up in their own time with their own degree of, you know, wants and detail. So it'll be, I think, really interesting, and maybe something that you'll want to take up in your next call with, preferably with Council President Friedson, is sort of where is the county council and the county executive going to come out on this bill? On the principle of potentially usurping county authority, separate from the, whether the issue itself is.
Is something plausible, yeah. No, you're exactly right. And that's how I read it as well, where I'm not sure that they'd be willing to cede that type of, you know, authority right now, even if they agree that we have. Those are the updates that I have. I know that was a lot of information, but I'm happy to ask, answer any questions. More will be revealed.
We're going to start calling your car. Anyway, boys.
I remember, I remember calling, you hope, yeah? Wear the turban or whatever, yes. That is all that we had on the agenda. Is there anything else anyone would like to bring up?
I have one final comment to offer, which is, I always get so amazed about this. We only have three more county council meetings.
As a council, yeah.
April's the last functioning county council in May, is basically just to, you know, mayor and the treasurer take over, make presentations on what we've accomplished and what the budget's going to look like. And there's a relatively frankly pro forma vote for the budget, but it's not an operating council meeting in a normal sense. And when we later meet subsequently in May, that's with the new council. So I just wanted to mention that. There are only three more meetings. So in terms of the work we're doing, which is a lot, but in terms of winding up other things they wish to do, just to clarify that.
Time flies, we can have a fun.
There you go. And early.
And early. All right, well, Rich, have a wonderful vacation. Joy, I hope you.
Thank you.
And we are.
Oh, on Saturday morning, some of us will be there with the.
Saturday morning, we're having a walking tour of backyards. We'll be given a spreadsheet of who's given us permission for what, and the following Thursday, we'll be meeting with the Purple Line officials, so that should be, that should be good.
Tolbert will be joining you, Tolbert will be joining you for the walking tour. I confirmed today he'll be there. I told him where to meet and everything, so he will be there.
Good.
Great, great. We are adjourned, thank you.